I'll be September monthly meeting of USD 350 for education order. Welcome visitors. Any additions or changes?
I have none.
Okay. Can I get a motion to approve the agenda?
Mr. President, I move that the board approve the agenda as presented.
Second. It's been moved and seconded that we approve the agenda as presented. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposing? Motion carried. Okay, consent agenda.
Nothing out of the ordinary report on the consent agenda. Mr. President, I move the board approve the consent agenda as presented.
Second. It's been moved and seconded that the board approve the consent agenda as presented. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Motion carried. Okay, patron comments. First up, neighborhood revitalization plan.
Every five years, we have to renew this agreement. This agreement provides tax relief to encourage improvement in the county. So if you want to add on to your home or business, the additional valuation, the assessed value of the property, that would be forgiven in some percentage, depending on whether it's commercial or residential, for a period of time. Since we are a taxing entity, we have a say in that. My feeling is, we should do that. Any growth in our tax base is good. And deferment of those taxes on that growth, I think is worth the increase in tax base down the road and just growth in the community. So that agreement, the full agreement is on, the plan is on the Stafford County's website. The agreement to continue that till 2025 is on page 3132. I'd recommend approving that.
Mr. President, I move the board approve the neighborhood revitalization plan agreement as presented.
Second. It's been moved and seconded that we approve the neighborhood revitalization plan as presented. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Motion carried.
One more thing on that. Each July, we make appointments. One of our appointments is to serve on a committee for this. So if there's things that come through, people make application for those tax breaks, then the representative would have to meet. We haven't had that in quite a while. So if there was any question about it, we might have to get together, discuss.
Okay. School snack policy.
Lisa Cornwall has recommended we do something like this with wellness policy. It's just in the interest of keeping everybody safe and healthy to fit with our healthy snacks at school. We've never really had any limitations on what can be brought. You know, there's a concern there that where's, where's the food coming from? We've never had an issue with that, but here with this pandemic situation, it's probably more important that we take these steps. So it's really just saying, the refreshments, the things that we bring or send for birthday parties, things like that, should be store bought. We need some guidelines. So I'd recommend approving that policy. Is this going to be long term or temporary, or what do you think? You know, Lisa has recommended that we do it every year. We kind of drug our feet just because we haven't had any issues, but we can change that at any time. So.
Is this also going to, is this also going to be for the parents who put stuff on the lockers before games and those kind of things?
Yeah.
Okay.
So again, we can just, we can change it anytime. We feel the need to. This is my policy that I would recommend at this time.
Mr. President, I move the board approve the school snack policy as presented.
Second. It's been moved and seconded that the board approve the school snack policy as presented. All those in favor say aye.
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 Opposed, same sign. Motion carried. Okay, the staff memo of understanding.
So our situation is with the COVID situation, we wanted to outline what's going to happen with leave time. We didn't want to end up in a situation where we have somebody that's out for a month and a half and we have to approach that, what are we doing with the leave time during that situation? So really, this MOU just outlines, the Federal Coronavirus Response Act says that two weeks of leave time are granted. If you need to quarantine because of the virus or you're sick due to the virus, if you need to be gone from work, two weeks of leave time are paid. That is not deducted from leave time. And this also says that if the federal government does not extend that act past December 31st, which is when it expires now, then we'll just go ahead and continue to work under that premise that two weeks are provided for this school year. The other part of that, we get specific about prorated on number of hours. So if you're not full time, you don't get the full 80 weeks. And then this part specifies, once that leave, two weeks leave time has been exhausted, how do we deal with the leave time? Essentially, this says if, if the quarantine or the illness is because of exposure at school, at work, then we don't deduct any leave time. If it's due to exposure in their personal life, they'll be required to use their discretionary time after that two weeks, their sick leave, their personal leave, and all of that. And how do we determine where that came from? The county health department would conduct contact tracing to make that determination. Beyond that, I don't know how we would make that call. If teachers required quarantine, but students are still in class, or if they're even all virtual, the teacher's still capable, we expect them to keep working remotely to receive that uncharged time off. Obviously, if they can't work, if they're ill, then they wouldn't be able to do that. They would still get that paid time off. If it's their personal life where they, where the issue arose, they can still teach remotely, and if they do that, we'll only charge a quarter of the leave time. And then this specifies that we want teachers to make sure they have subplans ready, handbook of what needs to be done in case teacher needs to be at, at home for an extended period of time, or is sick and can't do anything for a period of time. So one extreme is, if you get the flu and you have to be out of work, whether that exposure was at work or not, your leave time is deducted. If you weren't paid for that time that you're not at work, leave time is deducted. We don't make any exceptions. So if we do nothing, that's the way our board policy is right now. If there's an illness, regardless of where it was contracted, the leave time must be taken. This is obviously a unique situation. So on one hand, that's probably not fair. On the other hand, is if we have, just regardless of what happens, the coronavirus is a bad situation. If it affects you, then you can take all the time you need and no leave time is ever deducted for anything. That's obviously the other extreme of that, that somewhere in the middle is kind of where we landed here. I know, Mac, you wanted to.
Yeah, we just.
Question your call.
Yeah, there was a situation that was brought to our attention. And so Joanne McAllister, her father passed. When she went to that funeral, she masked up, her whole family masked up, but people there did not. If she were to come down the next two weeks getting it, I mean, granted, she had the federal two weeks, but let's say that she already had, used that up. Would she then, like contact tracing would probably link it back to that event. But what if it was an asymptomatic student or staff member that she got it from? Where does that fall into that? Is that like a judgment call, or is that?
I think that is, I think there would be some judgment with that. But again, leaning on the health department, and they use Kansas Department of Health and Environment contact tracers to go through that process to determine where that contact happened. They don't just look at it and say, well, she was at, around a bunch of people. We don't know. That's probably where it came from. Their interest is in locating that and locating people that have been exposed. So it's not, I would guess, I don't know how it all works, but in that situation, if, if there was an asymptomatic case or more than one in our school, it wouldn't just happen and go away and we never know about it. It would spread. So if, if she would come down with the virus and have to be at home for a period of time, and they determined that, oh, there was several cases at that event, and there's no cases that have come about in the last couple of weeks at school, it's probably pretty clear. If there's cases at both places, then I think we'd have to make that judgment of, well, yeah, obviously, it could have very easily have come from school. It's just one of those things I think we'll have to address when it happens.
I think that was our, that was the main issue was, if there's something, maybe something in there that says on a, whether it's a case by case basis, or if it's like a, you know, based off of what's happening within our district or our school, that that's, you know, I mean, I don't think any teacher's going to go throw a COVID party or anything, but.
Right.
But they just want to make sure that we've got that kind of established, that that is a possibility.
Yeah. Yeah, and I think we just have to lean on the county health department because they're, they have a vested interest in making sure they know where that came from, where it's being spread. So this is one of those things that's not perfect, but it's better than nothing. And I think it gives our employees some security that, yes, we're asking you to come to work and be around a lot of people. If you happen to have to quarantine or get sick because of that, we want to take care of that.
Any other questions?
And there may be some tweaks that we have to make as we roll along. My recommendation is to approve this, and we can sit down with the teachers and see if there's any glaring issues. We were going to try to get together, and Mrs. Benke's been gone. She had to be quarantined for a period of time, and then Mrs. McAllister had to death and her family. And we just haven't been able to sit down and hash all this out. So we just, we do need to do that, and we need to have a plan moving forward. Otherwise, we just have to charge leave time for every sickness and quarantine.
Mr. President, I move the board approve the MOU as understood and as presented.
Second. It's been moved and seconded that the board approve the MOU of understanding as presented. All those in favor, say aye.
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 Opposed, same sign. Motion carried. Activity account.
This is a simple one. Mr. Knight's audio video productions class needs an account. They do some fundraising and there's expenses that is more easily used in the activity fund. So I'd recommend adding a line for that. Mr. President, I move the board approve the addition of an account for the AV productions class in the activity fund.
Second. It's been moved and seconded that the board approve the addition of an account for the AV productions class in the activity fund. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Motion carried. Okay, board member activities and reports. Sean. Debbie. Okay.
Is it my turn?
Yeah.
The microphone that you guys have fits in and out. I attended the meeting last, last month and got to meet the new assistant director. It's just business as usual, nothing out of the ordinary. We do have a meeting scheduled for next week. The whole Haskins thing, I mean, the whole building, yeah, has been put on hold, but we're going to be talking about some major renovations that have to be done at Haskins. That's going to take a little bit of money out of the budget, but not anywhere near the amount that we were talking about when we needed to add a new facility or do a major renovation. I don't have anything else for that. The library board's going to start meeting again next week as well.
Okay. Administrative reports.
Okay, got enrollment going. I think we're starting, we're almost three weeks in now. We gained a few kids, we've lost a few kids. Our total for grades seven through 12 right now is 140 students. That was current as of the end of the day to day. That's about two or three students more than what we had at the end of the school year last year. As we've gotten into this, I have to be, you know, I was cautiously optimistic, or maybe not even so optimistic as the school year started, but I'm very proud of our students and our staff and the way things have rolled out and the parents. Things have started out pretty smooth, considering how we've evolved through the summer. Right now, we have 11 students who are remote. We've had a few more than that, but some of them decided that face to face was a better option for them. So we're allowing that, that move back into where they're face to face. But overall, I think our, our success has been pretty good for the start of this year, considering March 12th was the last time we saw these students in the classroom. Probably the exciting news on the home front is our residential carpentry class has nine students in it. Couple of them are taking multiple classes. So through three hours, the least he has is four kids in at one time. And we'll be, I thought it was today, but I misunderstood it, next Monday. They'll have a roll-off dumpster out there, and they'll be ready to start cleaning up and doing some demo work. The AV class is documenting that progress. I don't know if you shot some stuff over there already, Mac?
Oh, we've gone over there once just to kind of give them a, but. They lay at the land, but we'll be over there this week probably.
You kind of wait until some of that stuff gets cleaned out. So, because there's still some personal effects in the house and stuff. But really excited to develop what that looks like for us. So hopefully, we can give you some updates on that as we go. We started our sports. Everything is competed except high school football. As you guys know, we had a quarantine kept us out. Actually, after tomorrow's practice, we can start playing games. That's the 14th practice that we've been able to have with at least 50% of the, of the team there. And that's, so people have asked me, why didn't the practices, when you had just three, three athletes out there, why don't those count? In case your rules say you have to have 50% of your team there for it to count as a team practice. So got homecoming this Friday. I guess it's a good game to come back on. And we're also going to have senior recognition night at halftime of that game. So we're going to try and get that in while we, while we have an opportunity to. Hopefully, hopefully, we get to have the whole season. But in the event we don't, we'll at least have had those celebrations. You know, some of our, we have a cross-country meeting coming up this week. We're going to have about 400 athletes there. There was some concern about having that many kids. We moved the, or I say we, Coach Dill and Coach Smith are moving the starting line so it's able to spread out wider, or asking people to tell their schools to tell their fans not to congregate at the starting line and finish line. But other than that, we're kind of going as planned. Some of you guys may know, some schools and leagues have limited plans at games. We haven't had to do that yet. It's kind of a mess if, if a school does that. So we've come up with a policy. Josh talked to me and thought we needed something consistent. I agree. We have a, I don't know, at Skyline, they allowed two, each player could have two tickets to give to somebody. So we've just kind of come up with a process for how those tickets are distributed per athlete. What happens if an athlete's not using their, their tickets? So we have something that's consistent, hopefully. I don't think there's a lot more schools. Burton's doing that this week. I don't know of any others. But we do have some of that going on, but for us, so far, we still have full crowds. One thing that a lot of students have asked me is, what about our musical in the fall? Wendy's still planning on doing a musical. It may look very, very different than it ever has. It may be a live broadcast. It may be recorded and DVD sold. She's working with, with the copyrights to see what we can do there in the event we can't have a crowd. But she is still planning on doing something so the kids can participate in that. Might be short, several short acts instead of a longer play. It might be something more modern, so the clothing, not all the clothing changes and stuff. One of the things Josh just talked about is contact tracing. As you know, neighboring school had seven through 12 temporarily on quarantine because they couldn't, my understanding, and I don't know this for sure, but my understanding is they didn't have a process for, for contact tracing. So Josh pulled three random high school kids' names out and gave them to me. We went through our process of contact tracing. I thought it worked pretty well. We shored up some areas like lunch, how we're going to tell who step by who at lunch. We've got that figured out. But the bottom line is, is of the, of those three, the most students that would have been quarantined was eight instead of a whole school. So I feel pretty solid. Teachers have all submitted seating charts. So I pulled those seating charts, get the kids' schedule. I can see exactly where everybody sits in relationship to each other in class. So we're ready for that, I think, if that comes up. We do have a, I don't even know what to call her. We have a person who's going to be listed as our special education teacher now. She's kind of subcontracted. Unfortunately, she'll be here one day a month. The rest of the time, she'll be a virtual contact. It's what we have. It's better than what we had yesterday. So today, she started and she came in and met with some, met with the pairs and stuff. So we've got somebody to run IEPs and things like that, and make sure we're covered on that end. Again, still not ideal, but it's better than less. Hopefully, it doesn't last forever because it's going to be pretty stressful. And then my last thing is, if you guys remember, we decided to put in the NFHS cameras, and we have not gotten those installed yet. They came in last week, something came up, they didn't get them installed. They were supposed to be back today. They, I'm not sure what happened there, but we're hoping by the end of this week, we'll have that system in place. We are going to continue until we have the system in place where people can, can log into NFHS and watch games. We will do our best to have somebody for our home games, excuse me, broadcast those on Facebook Live, like we have been doing our best with it. So people who don't feel comfortable coming to the games can have a way, have a way to see that. Any questions on any of that? That's quite a bit.
Okay, thank you. Mr. Meyer.
Yeah, just a quick update on the way our operations have gone. Echo what Mr. White said, you know, it's been a pretty good start. The kids have been, been very good. You know, it's easy to get back to our routines, and the masks are awful to wear all day. I see a lot of times where they're able to take breaks from those. There's some challenges with the remote learning, the teachers having to teach the kids in front of them and the ones online. It's pretty simple for me to have Debbie on here, but imagine if I had a classroom full of kids and I'm trying to, well, Debbie gets kicked off, now I've got to deal with that. There's, there's challenges with that, and it's, it's not, it's not easy. So our teachers are having to work harder than they normally would. It's difficult to manage your attendance issues. We always have some attendance issues. We certainly don't want kids that are sick coming to school, but those families that have a hard time getting their kids to school. This situation is going to make that worse, and we've seen a little bit of that. But overall, things have gone, gone well. Getting back into activities, I think we've shown we can do some of these things safely. We went through that contact tracing. You know, there's some classes that kids are not sitting within six feet of each other, ever. So they wouldn't be considered a close contact, you know, unless there was some sneeze towards somebody else or something like that. I think we've been, been able to do a pretty good job of keeping, keeping folks separate. So we won't have to quarantine our whole school, hopefully, if we have a situation break out. Right now, we're in the green area. We track, every Thursday, I look at all the data on the quarantines and our gating criteria and the trend in the county. And we're looking good now. That doesn't really change a whole lot of what we were doing. We're still on alert, need to be, need to be careful. You know, we go back to that. We can't just do things normally, and then we end up, we have a case pop, and now we have 50 kids that we have to quarantine because we haven't been being careful. So, but again, things have started off very well, I think. Our enrollment side of things. Preliminary enrollment count. Our total K-12 with 302 and a handful more preschool students. The funding there just depends on whether the students have an IEP in preschool or whether they're at risk, whether we count the funding. So the, the total numbers don't matter that much at preschool. It's more of who they are. So we lost about six K-12. We have 22 remote learners, 11 in the secondary level and 11 in the elementary level. And those are students that have chosen to do the remote learning for the semester because they don't, their family situation, they shouldn't be here at school. We have eight, eight students at the elementary and one at the high school that made the decision to just homeschool, do their own virtual schools. They withdrew from USD 350 and they're doing their own thing. So you have those nine in there, K-12, you know, we're, we're up a few kids. So I was concerned about where these numbers would be. I feel comfortable with where we're at now. So count date is coming up on the 20th of September. That's when we'll make it official. So just a look at what's the history of our K-12 head count for the last decade or so. You know, we've got as high as 325. And it's been kind of up and down. Nothing in particular to attribute that to. One big drop year was a large senior class that dropped off. So I feel comfortable with where we are in our enrollment numbers. It's not going to hurt us too bad budget-wise. Mr. White already went over the, the house remodel project. We're working on the budget for that. Looking at about $70,000 between tools and, and the remodel budget for the interior. We're not budgeting anything for the exterior right now. It's all the interior. And we need to go through that with, with Mr. Moritz and get some specifics on that. On the accreditation side of things, last spring, our outside visitation team was supposed to come. our outside visitation team was supposed to come in, do our meeting, do our visit. Obviously, that was, that was postponed. We didn't do it. We had an option to do it virtually. We pushed it off till this fall. KSB has said, you don't have to make that up. Just file the report and we'll move on with life. So that's what we're gonna choose to do. We're not doing a lot of the school improvement things right now. Honestly, it's get in school, keep school open. We're asking teachers to do enough with managing the remote learning and we're gonna have classes quarantined and have to deal with more remote learning. We're not trying to do anything extra right now. Just keep the doors open and get kids back where they need to be. Dyslexia is one of those things that I think as a state, we haven't done a great job addressing and identifying and the state board took action last year or a couple of years ago to require some more training and screening process for dyslexia. They have not removed that requirement, so training is required this year. And next year, we'll have to start a screening process. We do that anyway for K through three with all of our testing. So that won't be a huge change, but having some training for our staff will be something that's coming. Strategic planning is something we've kind of talked about off and on when we set board goals. Do we want to get more of a long-term plan or just set the board goals? Honestly, we've been, between that water issue and now this pandemic, it's, it's hard to look long-term of what we want for our district. And then I think before, before I came, you know, nine years ago, there was, there was dramatic decline in enrollment and it was kind of, let's stay afloat and keep the doors open. And it's been a long time since we've really been able to look, what do we want long-term for our district? So I think we should consider some sort of process for strategic planning. On October 8th, KSB will have a online session about their process and how they go about it with community planning and staff and the board. So it would be a process, but I think it'd be worth looking into. It's a lot of work. It's not a lot of fun, but something I think we should consider. So if you'd like, I'll send out an email about that. It's just an hour-long session over lunch that, that will go through the process and explain what it's all about. So at least you guys have a better idea of what that might look like. There's other outfits that do that sort of strategic planning. We can do it ourselves without any help and additional cost. But it's, I think it's always better if an outside agency facilitates that. We're not attacking anybody. It's not, it's not Josh's goal. It's not Josh's vision or Derek's vision. It's, it's ours collectively. So something I didn't have on my report that I wanted you all to consider. Our athletics tickets, the Lions Club has done that for years. They just don't have the manpower and they're not doing the Midwinter Classic this year. So we need to hire people to do that. So we're just gonna pay $10 an hour for our staff members if they want to pick up a little extra cash. But that's something that we really need to have people do. Something that I wanted to make sure you all knew about. A couple of other things not on this list. The payroll tax deferment. The president signed an order deferring payroll taxes from September 1st through the end of the year. An executive order can't eliminate taxes, but they can't, he deferred them with the executive order. The problem with doing that is then they're, they're still due. So we can choose as an employer not to withhold those payroll taxes from employees for these four months. But then starting in January, we would need to withhold them that we should have withheld during this period over the next four months. So pay less in taxes now and then pay more later, it's still due April 30th. So there's a lot of problems with that, figuring how do we, how do we figure that withholding four months after we should have withheld it? And then if an employee were to leave, we don't really have any recourse to collect that from them, but it's still owed. So we made the decision to not mess with that at all, I think, like a lot of employers are. We hadn't had a chance to talk about that. There've been some questions about that. This week, I have a council of superintendents meeting virtually and then our State Superintendent's Association Board of Directors, Directors meeting. They are having that in Topeka, but I don't think I'm gonna make it up for that. I'll just do it virtually, but I've got those things on, on my list. That's all I have for my report. Thank you.
Okay. Executive session.
I'll need 10 minutes. Mr. White and myself.
Motion.
Mr. President, I move that the board go into executive session to discuss performance of specific employees and potential new hires pursuant to the non-elected personnel exception under KOMA with Mr. White and Mr. Meyer to be included. And that we return to open session at 8:34 in this room.
Better go 44.
7:44. We don't do it an hour long?
I'll second that correction. Okay, it's been moved and seconded that the board go into executive session to discuss performance of specific employees and potential new hires pursuant to the non-elected personnel exception under KOMA with Mr. White and Mr. Meyer to be included. That we return to open session at 7:44 in this room. All those in favor, say aye. All the same sign. Motion carried. All the meeting back in open session. Closing business items.
I have no resignations or contracts in our future agenda items. This is the meeting we typically do a facility tour. We wanted to include the house. We don't have a lot to see over in the building this year anyway, but we wanted to have some progress on the house at least. So next meeting, we'll go look at a few things in the facility and go take a look at the house next month. And then we'll have official enrollment and we'll start my evaluation.
Okay. All right, motion adjourned.
Move adjourned.
Okay. It's been moved and seconded, we adjourned. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All the same sign. Motion carried.